Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools District to order. Sorry about the little delay there, we were just having a slight technical glitch. We'll begin this evening with a moment of silence. Thank you. Will you now please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Sue Flynn will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Sue. The first item on our agenda this evening is a highlight of the 2015 and 2016 anti-bullying activities that happened in our buildings during the month of October. All of our buildings and our staff showed some efforts to promote anti-bullying, and I just want to remind everyone that bullying and/or harassment of students and adults are against federal, state, and local policy and will not be tolerated by the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. Bullying and/or harassment on school grounds or at school activities by students or adults is prohibited. And again, in October, all of our buildings participated in ways to highlight that. We have a lot of those exhibits here in our board packet tonight, but I would like to ask if Cora Turner, our Executive Director of Student at Risk Services, has anything to add this evening to come on up?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
First of all, I just want to thank the buildings, the staff, and the students for the work they put forth in exhibiting, the exhibits they did within their building. I do embrace that our district does not tolerate bullying and harassment, and once again, showing appreciation for the work that was completed. Thank you.
Thank you. It's very nice. Andrew's not here tonight, but if anyone in the audience at the end would like to see from our various buildings, they just did a really nice job all across the board, from elementary to middle to high school, proclaiming that we will not tolerate bullying in our buildings. So, thank you, Cora. The next item on our agenda then is our Teammates Mentoring Program, and January is National Mentoring Month, and we have Ellen Vanderloo here this evening. Welcome.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to come and just give the board a little update about our mentoring program. This is now entering into the sixth year of the Teammates Mentoring Program in the Waterloo Schools, and this is a school-based mentoring program that is funded through our At-Risk money, and we are part of a larger organization, Teammates, that was founded by Tom and Nancy Osborne, the former Nebraska football coach. And so, this year, I just ran my numbers today, and currently we have 132 matches, and I match students in grades three through 12. And so, just kind of looking, we have nine third grade matches, 23 fourth grade matches, 25 fifth grade, 23 sixth grade, 19 seventh grade, six eighth grade, and then it goes on up, and we have eight seniors this year that are in the Teammates program. One of the things that I'm really proud about Teammates is that we have a post-secondary consultant that comes and helps serve our program, and his name is Des Moines Adams, and he comes at least once or twice a year, meets with the kids, talks to them about going to college, and he has procured scholarships that are just for kids that are in the Teammates program. So, we have three scholarships to Hawkeye that are $2,000, they get $1,000 a year, and then we have three to you and I that are, again, just for Teammates kids. And this last year, we had two students from East that got scholarships to Hawkeye, and unfortunately, well, I don't know. Anyway, one of the boys went on into the Navy, so he is not using his Teammates scholarship, but the other girl, Lacey, is at Hawkeye using her Teammates scholarship. And then, as part of the program, Teammates also recruits post-secondary mentors, so she has someone, her name is Kiana Levy, on the Hawkeye campus, and she meets periodically with her just to make sure she's doing okay, and just somebody kind of as a touchstone for her because we want her to be successful in college. You may have seen in the celebrations section on Sunday, we published a list of all the mentors that meet with students in the Waterloo Community Schools, and this year it was a joint effort between Big Brothers Big Sisters, the Job Foundation, and Teammates. We are the three certified mentoring programs in the Waterloo community. So, we're trying to support all three of these efforts because we do feel that it has a tremendous impact on our students. Each semester, I collect data on grades, disciplinary referrals, and unexcused absences, and we're able to show that, I think, one of the biggest numbers is that 76% of the kids that had Teammates mentors had fewer office referrals between first semester and second semester last, this is last year's statistics. So, having a caring adult show up once a week and kind of checking in, being held accountable by that person, really seems to help. And the other big thing is 65% of the kids showed improved attendance. So, again, having an adult that says, "It's important to come to school, it's important that you try your best." And just from a personal level, I had a mentee graduate this year from East High School. I had mentored her through the Big Brothers Big Sisters program from Lowell Elementary when she was in fifth grade, all the way through Central Middle School, East High Expo, and finally graduating, she, her diploma was from East High. But I know for certain that she probably wouldn't have graduated if I hadn't been there, really pushing her and encouraging her, and it, you know, she was one of those kids that came down to the last day, the last credit, but thank goodness for those teachers at Expo that hung in there with her too. But I think mentoring really does make a difference. And right now, I'm mentoring a little girl that's in fourth grade at Cunningham, and it's just kind of fun because at that age, every week I come and the whole class goes, "Your mentor's here, your mentor's here," you know, and other little kids come up and it's like, "Can I come with you, or can I get a mentor too?" So, I would just like to say to our community that there still is a tremendous need for mentors. I have 35 kids on the waiting list, and I try not to really put too many kids on the list because it's almost kind of like then you are the kid that doesn't get picked or something. So, the more mentors that we can recruit, the better. And I was really encouraged Saturday on Key W W L, they were doing a story about some gunfire among young teens in our community, and I believe both Chief Treoka and the mayor said that we need more mentors to get involved in these young people's lives so that they can have some alternatives besides this violence and acting out behavior that we have. So, do you have any questions, or?
You said you have a waiting list. How do people go about becoming a mentor?
They can contact me, Ellen Vanderloo, my office is here at the administration building. On our website, there's an application, or I will be happy to email or mail an application to you. So, it's just, my email address is vanderloo@waterlousschools.org.
And what's the commitment of the mentors?
Well, that has changed because Teammates now is asking for a three-year commitment. Used to be one year, and I used to be able to recruit a lot more college students because it was easier for them to commit to like a one or two a year. But what we know from research is that kids benefit more from longer-lasting relationships, and so that's what I'm really looking for, is somebody that can really commit to a young person over time.
Exciting. You're going to talk from a parent's perspective, right?
That's correct.
I'm going to talk from a mentee perspective. I think that it has been mutually beneficial. I've gained so much, I've had a little girl since she was in third grade, and she's now in seventh grade, and it has been a tremendous learning curve for someone who doesn't have a kid to learn different things. I've learned to be more accepting of, like, you don't have to like, "Why don't you like science? I don't understand." So, I mean, it's been, it's been just, I think, mutually beneficial. We've learned so much from each other, and the amount of time I'm able to take away from work to do that, I mean, a lot of companies are pretty supportive of that, and Ellen has been amazing in making sure that we have been able to meet at a time that's conducive for both of us, as well as outside of school, being able to take her to activities outside of school. So, Ellen is amazing at the job that she does in making sure those matches are working.
And just from a parent's perspective, I've been, my daughter's been fortunate to be in the Women in STEM group, as you mentioned there. She was one of the first groups that started there when she's a fifth grader, and just watching her blossom with, you know, thinking about STEM, she wants to be a veterinarian, so just seeing her interact and being from a technical background myself, being able to see what she's learning from her female mentors there that want to keep her involved in science-based learning, so it's, she loves the program. I think that's just a perfect example of how mentoring can impact kids on all ends of the spectrum, so.
Their group just met today, and it just blows me away, they're working on a fuel cell car. I don't even know what they're doing. All I do is just take snacks, you know, and I kind of load them up because they're all starving after school, but it's just wonderful. And those women, they're engineers, mathematicians, architects, they're cool. You know, I think sometimes kids think, "Oh, scientists, you know, science isn't cool," but these young women that are mentoring our girls are cool. They're really neat gals, and it's exciting to see what's happening and the encouragement that the girls receive.
Thanks, Ellen. I also want to say that I know you do a fantastic job, but you also have an advisory board that works with you, and so will you please take thanks back to them as well? Because I know they volunteer their time to help orchestrate and organize, so.
Yes, and I continue to use the money that the Tyson Foundation donated to us. It's really been wonderful to have that extra money to use for recruitment and appreciation, those little special things to help the mentoring matches. So, I might want to just mention too that hopefully, maybe in the future, I can bring in Dave Van Deventer. One of our mentors was recently chosen to receive the Governor's Excellence in Mentoring Award, and he's going to be presenting that at February 3rd at the Rotunda by Governor Branstad, so that's a huge honor. Really excited for him.
And I had a question, Ellen. You started stating the matching, and it looked like it started at third grade. Is that intentional, and what is the thought process behind that?
Teammates, the Teammates program has always set third grade as the age when we will start making matches because they feel that younger than third grade, children should be bonding with their parents and their teachers, and then by third grade, they're ready to add another adult into their life. So, that's their philosophy. And I wanted to present Angela. I have here her Certificate of Appreciation, signed by Terry Branstad and Kim Reynolds, in honor of Mentoring Month. So, this is something that all of our mentors are receiving too.
Excellent. Thank you. Exactly. You can open that door, you two, so. Thank you, Ellen, I appreciate that. Well, the next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. This is a time and an opportunity for those who wish to address the school board to do so. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I will ask you to conclude your public remarks. Please also keep your comments respectful and constructive. We are all here with the goal of trying to help our students. I would like to ask that you avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels, not in a public forum. And finally, we provide this opportunity for public comment, but it is generally not a back-and-forth discussion, especially for items that are not on our agenda, but at times we will try to help and clear up information if necessary before or after the meeting, but we have to proceed with our board meeting agenda items. So with that, I invite anyone who wishes to address the board to come forward and start by stating your name and address.
My name is Vince Little with Sportability of Iowa. I live here in Waterloo. Basically, Sportability of Iowa, we are a, Sportability of Iowa seeks to empower individuals with physical disabilities in Eastern Iowa through participation in inclusive sports and recreation activities, the importance of acceptance and respect for diverse populations. What we are looking to do is assisting students with disabilities and physical impairments. Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 states that no otherwise qualified handicapped individual shall solely by reason of the handicap be excluded from the participation in or be denied the benefits or subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. So with that, what Sportability is wanting to do is offer the same opportunities available through programs like Sportability of Iowa to provide adaptive sports education and the physical education classes. Inclusive sports education provides hands-on experience about physical disabilities and what they can do through competitive adaptive sports programs. Okay? How it works is, the first thing is, we want to introduce the sports, inclusive sports coach to be brought into a physical education class, to teach each student about equipment, rules, and educate, education of inclusive sports programs. The second thing is, we want to bring in participation, involving the students to get to try out and play inclusive sports by using the equipment a physically disabled person would normally use, and they will play full games in the sports selected. And then the third thing would be competition, a school-wide assembly and scheduled for all students and staff to attend with a game played of staff team versus student team. I previously did this at Central Middle School, so I have kind of introduced it to your school system. The equipment, basically, what we want to do is we want to be able to come in and set something up and bring in some equipment. With the school-wide or school district, I like to do it at all four middle schools and both East and West High School. With that, there would be a rate just to bring in the equipment, which for three days, we're looking at doing for all across all the schools, it'd be $2,000 for just a basketball program, about $2,300 for a hockey, roller hockey program, and then a softball program would be about $2,500, cycling, or hand cycling about $1,100. Now, these are all just kind of guidelines we used for the equipment, just to help with the maintenance and the travel expenses and stuff like that. So, why we want to do this is in 2010, a study compiled by the U.S. Government Accountability Office found that although the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or the IDA, mandates full participation, 12% of students with disabilities in grades seven through 12 did not take traditional physical education classes. So, the push for inclusion in school sports couldn't come at a better time. Part of this also from that is we want to expand on that and hopefully develop high school competitive wheelchair teams and allow all students to be part of the wheelchair sports and just enjoy, you know, what it's to be like and have fun with it, so.
Thank you, Vince. If you have any information that you'd like to leave with us tonight, that would be great.
Yeah, I have, I have a PowerPoint or a PDF file I can send to you. I was going to show it, but we're having issues with that.
Sure.
And then I can also leave you guys all my business cards as well to contact me for more information about it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wondered, I wanted to add that, were you, was it two years ago, we had the state champ for track?
John Liskow.
Yeah, from West High School. So, was he part of your program?
Yep, he is part of our program. He's one of my basketball players, and then Jack Germain is actually, they're sitting behind me here, he's actually the guy that started the Adaptive Sports Camp that introduced John Liskow to track and field. So, he's, we've been trying to expand the sports in Eastern Iowa throughout all the schools and the high school programs, so we're looking to do more with that down the road by doing some physical education classes, introducing the kids, because sometimes, not just a minimal disability, I mean, you can have a major ACL turn, you know, tear or something happen to you. We have Spencer Carver down in Prairie High, down Cedar Rapids area, he got in a spinal cord injury, this was last year, is a high school senior this year. He is now in our program, does wheelchair basketball with us, and travels all over the country playing in tournaments. So, we want to be able to educate students that there's opportunities if something were to happen with them, or they do come across a major illness or disease that leaves them paralyzed or in a wheelchair, so, but not just wheelchair. I mean, it's not just limitations to that either.
Thank you, Vince.
Is this organized by, like, school district or metro area or some sort of geographic?
We're a nonprofit organization that we cater to all Eastern Iowa, so Sportability of Iowa, so we want to get into all the schools and bring these programs to all the schools in Eastern Iowa. So, I figure Waterloo schools would be the first one to start with.
Thanks, Vince.
Just one more thing. Sue and I were just talking about how there's a lot of organizations, okay, I'm done. A lot of organizations that are willing to donate to things like that, that could be used for that, so, I mean, if you seek funding from places like Veridian Credit, you might be able to get some money.
Yeah, no, definitely. We appreciate that.
Thanks, Vince. I'm trying to keep it to three minutes. I said three minutes, I'm trying to be fair, so.
Hello, my name's Mike Moots, and I live in Waterloo. I've lived in Waterloo for 39 years. I know Lyle, for instance, on the board here. I'm against the property tax increase that you want to vote on in February, and I, going back, because I've lived here 39 years, you know, I see your mission statement, that's good, but you know, at a given point, you got to say to yourself, educate the students, I'm all for that, but at what cost? You know, if the cost is a million dollars a student, then I'm against it, okay? So, we're in a situation right now here where we've got high taxes in Waterloo, in fact, 39% of the taxes that I pay every year in 2014 went towards the school districts here, 41 million, I guess it is. You get a state tax, you get a 1% tax, I got a, in addition to that, I got a cable bill that says I got to pay five bucks a month to get on that, I got a Mid-America that I have to pay 3% or 4% on this. I understand that other counties or other city, communities, districts pay some of their amount, for instance, Hudson has 2%, okay? But Hudson doesn't have the property tax grab that you people have on us already, on that, and I just think it's, it's too much, okay? It's way too much here. You know, I have a lot of income from outside of Waterloo, and you're asking me to says, "Okay, if you have $100,000 worth of income and your property and your tax on the state is 10,000, just add 4% or 5% on that," which is $400 or $500 more I would have to pay for that. I don't think that's fair, you know? I'd rather have a property tax increase than an income tax increase. It's getting too much here. You know, I looked at the salaries in, for the, for the school district, and you've got 20-some people that make over 100 grand a year. It looks to me like you're well taken care of. And finally, the last thing, point I want to make here is, you're suggesting these programs that I think mimic what you have at Hawkeye Tech. So, why would we duplicate what we have at Hawkeye Tech? You know, get rid of one of the two. Either Hawkeye Tech goes away, or you guys go away from asking for this stuff. Or, the other thing you could do is take the staff you already have, take the schools that you already have, and use those for this purpose. I have nothing wrong with educating the students, and I want them all to be successful, but let's face it, folks, over the last five, six years that I've been watching this thing out here, our graduation rate's pretty much been staying the same, and our success rate of what you're going to get out of this program, in my opinion, is going to be zero to minimal, okay? Maybe I'm wrong. I hope I'm wrong, but that's how I feel about the whole situation. So, I thank you for your time, but there's just a lot, there's just a lot of things here that need to be tightened up here before you ask for an increase. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moots.
Marvin Weber, 318 Olympic Drive, Waterloo. You know, you were talking about bullies before. Usually a bully doesn't recognize herself. They don't think they're bullying, do they? The problem I got, one of the many problems I have with the school board, is their global thinking literature they sent out, talking to your CFO. It says on here the cost, the first 8 million is to be paid for by existing funds. You know, with the average guy looking at this, "Oh, you guys got 8 million in the bank?" Talked to him the other day, you don't. The money's coming from the 1%. You don't have any money. To me, that's false advertising. And then you're going to have 47 million project funded at the property tax neutral structure? To me, that's fuzzy math, fuzzy thinking, fuzzy talking. You're darn right. I mean, I remember flipping the channels one night, and the superintendent of schools here didn't know the number, but they were talking about taking a little bit of money from the 1% school tax, a little bit of money from the property tax to pay for this darn thing. And all I want to know is, what happened to our 1% school tax that we're supposed to pay for all these schools? I think there's a lot of greed going on here. I remember what you said, don't criticize. I'll just make little statements and... And then the income surtax, just reading this, income surtax, from what income? All income? State income? This is, you know, people are, when I tell them that, they don't have a clue what I'm talking about, and there's a lot of people that don't even know you're voting on this. And I'm sure your advisors made it sure darn well that, I mean, in fact, you're not even done putting everything together, because you were going to vote on something tonight about this bond issue, so within 20 days, you want the general public to vote on this? I think you just kind of slammed it down our throats, you know? I mean, how many days, I mean, you're only spending 47 million. I mean, you know, that's pocket change to people in Waterloo, I guess, you know? And the reason, the reason why I'm up here, I'm not up here for myself. I can tell you, you people, you know, I'm leaving town and I'm gone. I'm here for my kids. I'm here for my grandkids, and I don't think you're looking after those people at all. Thank you.
My name is Bill Dawson. I live in Cedar Falls, Iowa, and I am in support of the district's proposed bond issue, especially because it will help improve district facilities and will offer valuable technical training for students in our district. First of all, if our community wants to offer a Class Act education, we need Class Act facilities, especially a new career technical center. To experience such a facility and see its many successes, one only need to travel to Des Moines Central Campus. What a payoff for that public school district. That regional career center boasts 1,500 enrolled students from 29 central school districts who take classes in 30 career and technical areas and 35 advanced courses not offered at traditional high schools. Because of its course offerings, this career center is drawing students from other school districts, and the facility averages 97% attendance. As one can see, there's been a tremendous payoff for having a career center of that nature. So if we build it, they will come. I believe that. Secondly, educational programming must continue to evolve to meet the needs of our society. There are highly ambitious students that are not interested in attending a two-year or a four-year college, or they cannot afford to even go to Hawkeye. So we have the opportunity here to help them get ahead at the high school level. Thirdly, baby boomers are retiring, and they're going to leave lots of openings for today's students who are now referred to as millennials. According to one study, there are 600,000 jobs for electricians in the country today, and about half of those will open up over the next decade. With so many boomers retiring from the trades or technical jobs, the United States is going to need more pipe fitters, nuclear power plant operators, carpenters, welders, utility workers, and the list goes on, according to the studies. But the problem is not enough young people are getting that kind of training at the high school level. So it is visionary for the Waterloo schools to want to offer this type of training. Our district can help prepare young people for good, well-paying jobs in the trades, and it's for these reasons that I do support the bond issue.
Mark Stunkel, 1139 Ridgemont Road. I wanted to come tonight just to also support the bond issue. It's something that I've been looking at for about the last three or four years, and it's a process that's taken a long. One of the things I appreciate is that it's a committee that has taken a long time and not taken steps to just jump right in. It is my understanding from talking to different individuals that about- It is my understanding from talking to different individuals that about 100 different people have been involved in not only talking, but traveling the country and going to communities, and not just communities, but communities that are similar to Waterloo, similar, that have similar industries, that have similar population, similar growth. The process has been strategic. And so as someone who lives in the community, is a proud member of the community, I appreciate that. I appreciate that this wasn't jumped in too lightly. I appreciate that it's the best interest of the kids that are looked out for, and that that's what's most important. That we looked out, what are the jobs that are currently out there for kids in our community, but what are the jobs that are going to be out there in the future? I appreciate that the committee talked to different industries right here in the Cedar Valley, from John Deere all the way down, and said, what are the skills that our kids need for you to employ them? And they said, you know what, these are the skills we need. Your kids don't have them. And the committee, from what I understand, said, how do we best train our kids so that when they leave school, when they leave high school, whether it's two years or whether it's four years, they have the skills to come in and then actually make an impact, not only for those companies, but to help impact those companies, which helps our economy, but helps employ those kids? One of the things that's important to me, and it's interesting, I was a teammate mentor of Ellen's. And so, many years ago, when the program was first starting, and I loved that process. And I currently have the opportunity now, and blessed to actually work at Big Brothers, Big Sisters in cooperation. And what a great partnership that is. One of the things that I get to see are kids who don't always have all the advantages that I had growing up and that I've been fortunate to give my own kids. I truly believe, I was, I've been working with kids the last 15 years, many of those in ministry, in schools. I have no doubt, I believe that every child has a chance to shine, every single one of them. Some of them may have a few little roadblocks thrown in their way, but if you give that kid an opportunity, they will shine. And this is doing just that. It's giving kids an out. It's giving kids that chance to say, you know what, there is an option besides just dropping out of high school and not having the jobs, or going to a four-year school. It's saying, I can make something of my life. It's saying, there is an opportunity for me to think something for myself, for me to better my family, for me to better myself. I see that every day in the kids that I meet at school. And that's what they want. The kids are like, just give me something. Believe in me. People and kids will rise to the level of expectation we have for them. I applaud this committee. I applaud the school district for having the foresight and the vision to say, we believe in you. This is a program that will help you, and we know that you can and will shine. Thank you.
My name is Chuck Lane. I live in 1204 Baltimore Street. I do in favor of the bond. I'm going to comment this in a different area. I'm a grandparent. My kids are all grown up here in school, went to school here. Also, I'm a grandparent. And last September, I became a great-grandparent. So I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren coming up in this school system. We need, with the tech school, when we offer it, is, if it'd been my days, I probably wouldn't be here today speaking. I probably wouldn't have had the mentors, the people I met along the road that guided me, because I lost my dad at age 16, many years ago. I wouldn't have gone to college. I wouldn't have got a degree in teaching. And I wouldn't have gone in other degrees, areas I went into. But the kids today need this challenge. They need to be challenged. Not all kids want to go to a four-year college. I grew up, you've got to go to college. You've got to get a degree. You've got to go. It was all that was ever said. I would have probably gone to a two-year college, and dealt with my dad there building homes and been a contractor, building homes, and making good money. Today, the kids need that extra to go to see, because everybody does want to go to a four-year. But go to a two-year, get into plumbing, get into electrician, get into this, whatever it is, with a two-year degree, and make, and start their own business even, on top of later. And that's why we need to offer this to, you know, our children and students as they get older, to give them an opportunity to pick what they want to do, instead of us always sometimes saying, this is what you've got to do. And I'd like to finish by one thing, what she said a little while ago. I'm not promoting anything, let you know that. I am a director of summer camp for kids. Six to eight for one week, nine is 14, 16 now we're up to. It's for children. They have incarcerated parents. But the thing is, if you ever you sit down to a six-year-old, and I'm guilty not talking to my own six-year-old as they grew up, and wonder what's bothering them for the day, you'd be surprised what they'll tell you. And as they get older, you sit down and listen to them, why, what's bothering you? You'd be surprised. As these kids tell you, share, because they're also growing up through all this. And one other thing for a go, she says I've got one minute or less. This, what this will help the parents who are struggling to make an income for their families, to give their children an opportunity to work and get into something they can work themselves as they get older. Because, preparing them for college at the same time, because a lot of them can't afford to send their kids to college. This is an opportunity to help them with their children growing up. Thank you.
Bruce Clark, 1938 Harrow Road, just on the edge of our great city. I'd like to compliment the board and the staff for the extensive process they used to come up with the best way to structure and reform the school. I know you've been looking at it for several years. We've been hearing about it. I went to several of the town hall meetings where we heard all the different options, and it all funneled down into an option that you feel is a good one and a good viable one, and it's something I can definitely support. And I'm glad to see, you're making an effort to make change, because if we don't make change, we're going to fall behind. And I know there's a changing need in the job market, there's a changing need in the education business too, and we've got to make those changes so that we can address those needs. I feel this, this structure and this reform that you're looking at will do that. It will make our community stronger, it will make more people employable, more people employed, and add some economic development. And so, in a few years down the road, when I'm ready to sell my house, there'll be a for-sale sign, Waterloo School District, in front of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I would like to say, we do have an item on our agenda coming later this evening that will, I think perhaps, further clarify some of the income surtax questions and some of the things that were brought forward this evening. So I encourage you all to stay tuned and stick around, because we're going to get there, so.
Would that be a better time to address some of the things that were said?
It's up to you. We can do it now, or we, I just thought it kind of went into the, some of the resolution for funding, but I'll yield.
Yeah, okay. Just a couple of things that Mr. Moots and Mr. Meyer said in terms of the overall cost. To me, this is an efficiency play in that the K-12 structure is currently in place. The current funding is about $6,500 a student, so that's $85,000-ish per student that's funded by this state now in that K-12 structure. What's being proposed here is an augmentation of the career and technical center to that structure in order to improve the amount of learning that happens in that K-12 time period. It's already paid for, and yes, this bond will add, I don't know, a couple hundred dollars per student, probably something. I haven't calculated that one out. But it's a marginal amount of extra cost. So, the goal in the bet here is that there will be an additional amount of learning that happens in those, in that K-12 year. The real goal is, in totality, is to foster more students with more skills that help not only the students, but the community and society in general. So it's not really in conflict with Hawkeye. Whatever they learn in those K-12 years, particularly if it's a technical or a feeder program in the Hawkeye, reduces the amount of time they need to be at Hawkeye, or Iowa State, or Iowa, or UNI. Now, the efficiency comes in if you realize that for every student that's, well, let's assume they can reduce a year from any of those institutions because they learned a year more because of the extra opportunity in the K-12 years. The state subsidy, the subsidy for each student going to college is more than the $6,500 that's paid for each year. So even though each student, that extra year of college, or the year they could learn in high school as opposed to college, they have to pay tuition for, so does the public. They don't pay their total cost. So there is an immediate return there. If you can reduce the number of student years, students from the Waterloo schools spend in college, and we want them to spend it in college, but the state subsidy goes away because they don't have to spend as much time in college. So, to me, the real goal is to have them learn more in the existing K-12 structure that's already paid for by offering a variety of different courses that pique their interest. I mean, let's face it, I don't think, you know, I think someone, one of them said that we're not fully challenging students. I agree with that. We're not fully challenging students. Students aren't learning as much today as they could. And sadly, if their interest doesn't come in that seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, sometimes it never comes. So I think it's real important to get these students, to offer them as much opportunity as in many, you know, hands-on lectures, as many different educational formats as possible, in order for them to simply learn more in the K-12 structure and become more interested in ongoing education, which they will have to spend fewer years in after high school. So to me, I think there is an immediate payback. Obviously, the bet is that they will learn more, but we wouldn't be doing this if we weren't pretty confident they wouldn't.
Great point, Lyle. Thank you. And if anybody else wants to jump in here, otherwise, I was just going to talk a little bit more about income surtax when we get to that point, just to clarify that and make sure, one more time we go through it, because it is complicated, so. With that, then, we'll move on to our consent agenda. And this evening, it consists of the following items: the minutes of the December 14, 2015 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable, and bills paid between board meetings, and the teacher enrichment grants. Are there any items that board members would like to have removed from the agenda? Then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to place these items on the, or a motion to entertain these items.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And all those in favor, then, of approving the consent agenda items C, D, E, and F, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. I guess I forgot to say, I think I heard everybody say aye, so I didn't say those opposed, but yeah, I think we're all good. Great. Then we'll move on. The next item on our agenda is item G on page 35. It's the 2016-2017 High School Planning Guide and Course Catalog. We all got this as part of our board exhibit, and I'd like to bring Dr. W. Lee and Crystal Buzzett forward.
Well, good evening. First of all, it's always a joy of mine to be able to stand in front of the board with our High School Planning Guide. And part of that is because of all of the people who contribute to that, the teachers, the coaches, administrators, the conversations, the discussions that we have, the work that's done in buildings by those department chairs in the high schools, and they bring that information back, and we meet again and again on that. So, I just want to thank them for all the time they put into that and the commitment they have. Also, this year, I want to just make a special note of the cover. I don't know if you noticed this, but this is from Linda Armstrong out of Tara Thomas's office. And my goodness, every year, for the last several years, she has come up with just some amazing graphic for our, front of our cover. I kind of want to do just a little shout-out to her and thank her for that, because she is very much appreciated for that. And my secretary, when I saw the cover, I said, oh my gosh, that's really awesome. I said, who, did you do that? And she said, no, Linda did. And I said, she is so good. So just a little bit of a note of appreciation to her. So, the High School Planning Guide, this was a year of minimal change, and there are purposes behind that. First of all, we need to stay the course that we're in right now, and we wanted to strengthen the courses in our curriculum. We're in the middle of a lot of great curriculum, what I had called earlier at a wellness committee meeting, renovation. It feels like big renovation to me. So the revisions that we're making in some of our curriculum is having impact in our classes as well. We need to strengthen that before we make any huge changes. So we're doing that. I'm going to review the High School Planning Guide this Thursday and Friday with our administrators and make sure that they know all of the changes, even though they've been part of some of those changes. Several things I wanted to highlight. One is the science. There were no changes in science. And again, that was purposeful. Our district science team is working now in revising our courses and curriculum to address the next-generation science standards, and this is on a pre-K-12 basis. So our high school has done a lot of work. There's going to be some different requirements in science that we are going to bring in front of you next year that will be implemented in the fall of 2017. Right now, the teachers are working on that and doing a great job with that. And it truly is, every single science, high school science teacher is working on this change. So it's really kind of fun to watch that and to see, and they don't necessarily, aren't going down necessarily a path I would always take, but in the end, I agree with them, and they're doing awesome work with that. So it's very exciting to be a part of their meetings and to sit and listen to them, decide what is best for students and how they're going to meet the next-generation science standards. So watch for that next year, because that will be, that'll be pretty interesting. Social studies, this year, there were no changes as well. We are beginning revision work with our pre-K-12 social studies. Just a little heads-up for you, the Department of Education is starting to work on new Iowa course social study standards. Those will be vetted yet this year, no, they are going to be written this year, vetted during the summer and next year with adoption toward the spring of 2017. So we've actually done some work with a pre-K-12 district social studies committee that we just started a couple months ago to really start addressing, looking at our learning progressions, looking at the curriculum that we currently have, what our current status is, and we'll be eventually building new curriculum and new courses based on those new Iowa course standards. So for this year, social studies is kind of a holding place for what we're doing as well. In the math theory, there are two things I want to point out to you. Number one is we eliminated Algebra I Part 1, and you as a board need to know about that. That is a course that takes algebra, the one-year Algebra I course, and divides it into two years. It was originally designed to meet the needs of students who needed that slower pace. But over the years, it has become more and more and more students have been dropping into that course. And we believe that that course does not set high expectations for our students. And the math teachers have been quite, I have been very vocal with them over probably about eight years about this course. And the work that the math district committee has done this year around their CFAs, around the revision, they have had really strong discussions about this, both ways, pros and cons. And they came up with a decision, and I actually hurrahed that decision, and they decided that it was time to eliminate that. Now, the basis of that shows our commitment and our belief that our students are capable. And so I am cheering this on. It shows that we believe our students can learn algebra within the desired timeframe of one year. It also commits us to the differentiation that needs to occur in the math classes as well as the support structures through the MTSS processes that are in place and need to be strengthened. So this is a huge step for our math departments to take, for our high schools to take as a whole, and I am very, very excited about that. Now, you may see in the program, in the High School Planning Guide, that we still have an ELL section of Algebra Part 1. The reasoning behind that is because we have students who come in who have not had math. Our ELL students, okay, there's different types of ELL students come in, and I don't, I'm even afraid of general. I'm even afraid of generalizing, because there's so many different kinds. But we have some who come in with a rich math background, and some who come in with a huge gap in their background. So for some of those ELL students, we decided that would be very important for them to have a specific Algebra Part 1, as well as the support that they need to do that, and to really get more acquainted with math in a, in a, in a little bit of a slower timeframe that we can fill the gaps that they need. This will be a very, very small number of students, and it's very specifically written for those students who have not had math in their recent background. So that's the ELL. We are also holding one section at each school to, to be able to utilize that for students who are on IEPs and absolutely need that. We're still wading through some of that and what that means if we take away Part 1, Algebra Part 1, for all of those students, but we committed to only one section at each high school of the students who might be on IEPs, who might need that. I see that going away as well really soon. So I want you to be aware of those kind of exceptions. The other thing I wanted to point out to, the exciting part that we brought to you earlier this year, on page one, you'll see that we provided the three diploma pathways. And it was very exciting for me to put that page together. Normally, I let my secretary do that, but I said, "I want to do that page," because I believe that that is very important work that you approved in policy earlier this year. We've already started committing to that. We have already approved a few core diplomas, have not yet approved honors diplomas, so I'm looking forward to that yet happening as well. And the other change, and I don't know why I didn't put this in the board, it's a minor change that shows, is very positive for our district. We now have our NCAA eligible courses are listed out as a district instead of separately for East and West. So we put all the paperwork in to make sure that with the NCAA eligible courses, we are now running that as a district instead of separate high schools. So I think that's pretty cool. We're going to work at adding, for instance, all our IB courses, we're going to work at adding some more of our courses to that and asking for approval to get on that NCAA eligible approval list. The other thing that is the continued strengthening of our CTE Career Tech programming, and I don't know if Crystal wants to say something about that at this point.
So the changes that we made for, in the CTE area, are very, very minimal. One thing that we realized that we hadn't done is we had done an introduction course for industrial technology to go over the career areas, an introduction to family consumer science, but we never created an introduction to business administration and marketing courses. So that was one thing that our teachers said, you know, "We really think that would help students be a little bit more interested in our career pathway," and so that was one thing that we definitely supported them and wanted to do. Another thing is, we had the Intro to Entrepreneurship course, it was actually under the Family Consumer Science course. It was really just listed under the wrong area, and so we moved it into the correct area right now. We did add an Intro to Computers course. Last year, that course was removed, and we had started doing Microsoft certification courses. There were two levels, and what the teachers found out was that there was a number of students who were computer-ready to go into the Microsoft certification courses, but some students didn't have enough introduction to computers through, you know, however they got to where they are now, and so they felt like, in order for students to successfully complete the Microsoft certification, that was a course that was needed. However, when we had that discussion, we talked very, you know, concrete about that this would be really a timeline thing, that really that needs to be something that we need to build down into the middle school pathway, and eventually, we would need to sunset that out of the high school area. So that was something that we all agreed that when we secure the funding for the CTE, for the Career Center, that that would be something that would not be a part of our programming at that point. Another great thing I just want to point out is that we now have a second concurrent course in the industrial technology, the Automotive II is now a concurrent course. Before, it was Automotive I was only concurrent. Now we have two concurrent automotive courses, so that's a really good thing for our students for next year.
So those are the highlights. So do you have any questions or comments or something we can help you with?
We'll have a couple. The first one is the Auto II. Could you explain what that means, please?
So we have a number of courses, and one of the courses that we currently offer as an automotive course is a concurrent course through Hawkeye, so students get Waterloo Schools and Hawkeye credit. The second course in that series that Hawkeye offered last year, we were not able to offer it as a concurrent course. So through meeting with Hawkeye and our teachers, and having Hawkeye come in and really work with our teachers on the content, and then observing their classroom management, they were able to grant us to move into that second level. So we were able to, you know, one of the things that we've talked about the whole way with Career, the Career Center, is that we want to do as much as we can now and not just wait for the Career Center. So this is one of those things that we can do now to help build that. The other great thing is the book that we currently have for the first course in that concurrent series, it's the same book that's used.
And students, if they still want to have a diploma or an Associate of Applied Science in Autotech, still need to go to Hawkeye to complete those.
Correct.
So I wanted to make that clear. The other point I want to make is I'm so very glad what you all are doing with the Algebra I Part 1, because it was, it was very much disabling our students at the college level. And it's easy to place students in Algebra I Part 1 and Algebra I Part 2 over two years, but once those students decided, if they chose to go to college, that student would more than likely miss Algebra II, which mean that they, which means that they would have to pay for a developmental course. So I'm very glad. I want to say thank you.
You are welcome.
For giving our students the opportunity to say yes to, you know, to those advanced math courses.
And we can thank our teachers for that as well. They actually came up with that decision. We laid it out there, Sarah, Stephen, our math specialist, and myself, and they decided they, they're ready for it. So we have some work to do. Oh, the other thing I almost forgot to tell you is we added Financial Algebra. We added a course that is a rigorous, wonderful course that can come either before or after Algebra II, and it's called Financial Algebra, and we're really excited about that. So that, we eliminated the Consumer II, which wasn't as strong as we wanted, and added this one, which is rigorous and strong, and we're excited about it. So we're doing some great math work, coming out of, again, the district math team and some of the decisions they are making.
And I also wanted to say thank you for the computer literacy portion of it, because even social science programs are now requiring a computer literacy credit. So hopefully, by the time students are juniors and seniors, they will be able to get dual enrollment credit. And so, and we do need to take into account that not of our, not all of our households are, they don't have the computer technology to deal with that. But I want to thank you for that again, for offering that credit.
You mentioned concurrent credit, especially for the CTE classes. Moving forward, as we move forward, Will, how many of the classes that are now connected through Hawkeye, we would now be able to, in the future, handle on our own?
As far as the number of classes, I'm not sure. That's one thing.
In general?
You know, what I would hope, if I had to just say an estimate, at least half of our CTE courses, we would want to be concurrent enrollment courses. It would likely be more than half, but I mean, I could easily say half of them would be.
It's just another thing to mention as a support for the moving forward with the bond issue.
Sue?
I just, now, obviously, all this is subject to class size, correct? So what, like, is the minimum class size that we would not hold a class, or we would go on with a class?
Are you talking generally, because we have some different standards for different programs?
That, I kind of figured that, but like, some of these specialized classes, like, for instance, like a sports marketing class, okay, I know they offered that this year, but there weren't enough people that took it, so they couldn't have the class. So I guess are the parameters that you use there, obviously, to determine that?
So actually, for the sports marketing class, that one was full. It was fuller than what a normal class would. They probably would have, should have looked at offering two sections of it.
That's what it was.
But didn't have enough to have two sections. So for CTE, we try, the idea would be that you'd have at least 10 students to get a class size to really make it worthwhile. However, I think we have had a few classes where there was about eight students where we've run the classes. In order to build some of those specialized programs, you know, that's one thing that the administrators at that high school really would have to make a choice on doing, so that's the beauty of coming together for a Career Center. You're not going to have to make those choices, because you're having students from both, from all three schools, wanting that same program. For the normal high school class, I guess I would let Debbie say about how many students they would have, but you know, generally, for CTE, we'd like to have at least 10, you know, really no more than, you know, if it's fewer than eight, we really have to think about, is that worthwhile, or is there another class that we could offer, our second section?
The other strategy we've talked about, have not implemented yet on some of those courses that we can't get enough numbers of students in, is running them every other year. And sometimes, we can do that. We have to be very careful how we plan that, but we've talked about that, we have not implemented that yet, but it's a possibility, it's a strategy.
The three languages, which is the most popular of the three, and then?
You mean the world languages? Probably Spanish is the most popular right now. We actually thought that German might kind of, kind of drift away by, because of student choice, and it's gotten stronger than ever. So that was kind of interesting to watch. We'd like to bring some other languages on. The world languages is right now in our curriculum cycle to start doing some review of. I have not started that yet this year, but we, we need to be doing that.
Just under the music section, I see that it says you deleted show choir. So is show choir going to become an extracurricular activity, or?
The teachers talked with me about that, and I asked Sam Kresic, who is our music lead, to help with that as well. That kind of surprised me, but what they said was they weren't getting enough students in that, and they weren't doing the show stuff that they were doing, that the students really were preferring at this point, the concert choir, and, and that they could take kids to contests, not so much in the show, but in the other choirs that they have. It's a better possibility of doing what they wanted to do in terms of, of student compete, competitions, training students to sing better, and all of that. We can always bring it back if they find that there's a, you know, an interest in it that would rise up again, but this was their decision to drop that course.
I think there was also some difficulty in scheduling, because you, in order to take show choir, you had to also be in concert choir. So for a student who wanted, you know, then that took two full years, or you know, two full slots out of your schedule for music, which was kind of hard. So I would, you know, kids had to make a choice.
The programs in music have changed over probably, I would say, the last eight to 10 years, in a very positive way. They have changed to pull more students in, a lot more participation. The guitar is one example of that, being able to do that. Even though we're into competitions and, and performances, it's not as performance-based as it used to be, and now we can corral more students into that and give them some platforms to learn music, to participate in music. And it's just a little bit of a drift that way, which has been a positive thing for our students. So this kind of surprised me that they wanted to drop that class, but they had good rationale for it.
Sorry, anything? Right, Glee went off the air, so. If there's not anything further, I am going to go ahead and get this motion on the table tonight that the Board of Education approved the 2016-2017 High School Planning Guide and Course Catalog.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And if anybody has anything further, I just realized I didn't have that motion out yet, so. Thank you both. Then, all those in favor of approving that recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. The next item on our agenda, then, is the Resolution on Funding Structure for the High School Reform Project. And before I turn this over to Dr. Lindeman, I just want to refer back to some of our initial comments that happened this evening regarding how we're funding this bond initiative, et cetera. And I know that both Dr. Lindeman and I, and I would guess that other members of the board have probably had questions about what does income surtax mean, what are save dollars, how are you spending them? Michael Coughlin can chime in anytime and help me out there. But I do think that with goodwill and good faith, our board has been very transparent about how we plan to use these funds, but in those discussions, we all felt that perhaps it would be an even stronger voice and even more of a commitment from this group if we passed a resolution prior to the bond discussing, once again, how we plan to fund this project. And so with that, some of the highlights of it would include the fact that we have, that we, I'm sorry, that we have been able to decrease property taxes for six out of the past seven years, and that this, the proposal that we are proposing for a tax rate is being offset by the State of Iowa Income Surtax and one-cent sales tax money, which is save money, and that we are committed to honoring our taxpayers' preference in instituting this, that we did do some work in our community to see what our constituents preferred. And so with that, I just want to say that we will, we can talk a little bit more about it, but we definitely are about trying to be as open and honest about how we plan to fund this. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lindeman. Maybe she can talk a little bit more about state income surtax.
Yeah, thank you. The one thing, I'm actually going to hold up, and I'm not expecting that anybody can see what it is, but I am going to just reference a one-page document called Get the Facts About Income Surtax. And the reason I bring that up to those in the audience, but also those who are watching, is because it is a really well-done document that provides a lot of answers to some of the frequently asked questions that are out there, and it's, it's pretty straightforward. So that is available on our district website. If you, matter of fact, I think the Career and Technical Education Proposal is the headline. So if you click on Waterloo Schools, you are going to see Career and Technical Education, and if you click on any of those links, it's going to take you to a list of supplemental documents. This is just one of them. And so another thing is frequently asked questions, and so that, I think that is a really important thing. So as far as the surtax, we have been visiting with, you know, anybody who has time and is willing and wants us to come and visit with them about the whole entire proposal, but one of the big pieces that we are able to share is the income surtax piece. And so I'm going to try to describe it on the air, but I really, really hope people will go to the website and take a peek at the PowerPoint, at the Get the Facts document. And so we, this board had, had heard the proposal that came out of committee, and I'm going to speak on behalf of the 100 people who represented the work that we are, are, you know, taking to the public in February, on February 2nd. So the committee listened to constituents who, who asked them to look at something different from, from placing the full burden of the, of the dollars needing to be raised to support the proposal on property tax. And so at that time, we did, you know, town hall meetings, we did focus groups, we did informal surveys in that the committee members went out and each spoke with two or three people, and we brought all of that data back and charted it and tried to take a peek at that. We additionally did a 400-person cold call survey, just to kind of have somebody else take a good look at that. We contracted with a company and had them ask people on a cold call, just meaning that they just randomly selected names and called and, and looked at that, and it was, it was supported. The proposal that is being discussed in this resolution tonight was really supported six to one. For every one person who said, "We prefer to pay, repay the $47 million on property tax," there were six people who asked us to consider funding it through, through a one, the one-cent money and the income surtax. So, you know, that, and then, as we are, as Crystal Buzzett and I are out and about visiting with people, one of the things that we had thought would be really important tonight is to just demonstrate the board's commitment. They have been transparent, I have been transparent, the committee has been transparent all along the way, saying that this really is the preferred method that we are hearing about, and so that's what this resolution is about. It is a statement from this board saying that they are fully committed to listen to the recommendations of the committee in, in using, utilizing income surtax. And because I have the microphone, I'm going to take one, one opportunity to make sure that I make this clear. One of the misconceptions that we are hearing out in the public, somebody, you know, people will say to us, "So this is a, this is a tax on my income." And, and really, the difference is, it's not a tax on a person's income, it is a tax on a person's income tax, and there is a difference. That one little word makes a difference. So if somebody makes, you know, whatever a person makes through, throughout the year, if they make $20,000, or $50,000, or, or $100,000, whatever that number is, that's not the determining number. So when you file your taxes at the end of the year, and, you know, I'm, I'm So when you file your taxes at the end of the year, and, you know, I'm, I'm going to use my hands a minute for the viewers, but if you file your taxes and this is your, your gross income, and then you are taking out deductions, and you're going all the way down to the bottom, and you have your adjusted income, and then you, it says, here's the amount of tax liability. Here's what you owe to the state of Iowa on your individual income tax. That dollar amount, that's the generator. That's the number that determines the income surtax. So it's four percent of that last number, not the top number. So sometimes somebody stopped me in the grocery store and said, if I make a hundred thousand, if I make fifty thousand, so I would pay four percent of that. And I said, no, no, no. So I had the opportunity to explain that to that person. So it's really, you know, we're, we're working night and day to make sure that, that people are hearing that message. That's why this document is really critical, and I do hope people will take the time to, to take a peek at that. The income surtax, again, is not a new concept. It is, it is new to Waterloo, which is something why we're, we're having to answer questions. If you lived in one of the districts that had had income surtax for many years, people get it, they understand it, they know how that works. That isn't the case in Waterloo, because we've not used that funding mechanism. Eighty-two percent of districts already use income surtax to fund perhaps instructional support levy or, or PEPAL. And I think the, and I'm going to editorialize a little bit here, but I think personally why I was so excited about the, the committee's recommendation is many districts who have that, most districts who have that, if not all, are using it just to supplement general fund or to do something that is, is a year-after-year thing. We are using this mechanism to do something which is a, a greater, a greater good. It's a, it's a proposal that has come forward that really changes the way we deliver instruction. It's not purchasing supplies. It's not a, an annual thing. It is truly making the, the proposal a reality. So with that, you know, I would certainly take any questions that you might have on that, but I just wanted to make sure I, I got that out to the, the viewers.
Thank you. Sue, did you have, did you want to show that list, or?
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Kind of cold.
I made you get your hands out of your coat. It's so cold up here.
Because, well, I did some researching on this, because I had some questions about it too. And three, three hundred districts in the state of Iowa use the surtax. So it's a large portion, obviously you said eighty-two percent. But just going through and looking at the communities around us, and just a highlight note, Postville uses a fifteen percent surtax. And the highest in the state is Corrith Wesley in Hancock County, and they use seventeen percent.
And the cap is twenty.
Mm-hmm. So twenty's the maximum, but there were some other fifteen percents and fourteens. But some elevens, like around here, Wopsey Valley uses eleven percent surtax, and Dungerton uses ten percent surtax. So, and then just a couple others that I thought was interesting, people would want, well, what about towns around us? Grundy Center uses six percent, Gladbrook Rheinbeck, three percent, Hudson, two percent, Dyton-Hartford, seven percent, Denver, four percent, Union in La Porte City, and Deiser is seven percent, Janesville, seven percent, and Waverly is six percent. So most, all the communities, obviously Cedar Falls does not, but most, all of the smaller communities around us already use the surtax, and in a much greater capacity than we use it. Or we're proposing to use it at the four percent. But, and I guess in answering a couple of the people that spoke before, I would, I know they left very quickly, but I would like to invite the second gentleman to go on a tour of our thirteen elementary schools to show him what we did with the penny. And I would be happy to go on a tour and show them how we use that penny, because I think that's a false representation that if people felt like we were misusing those funds, those pennies provided those new schools that we have for the elementaries and the upgrades and the other schools. But, and lastly, I just, I just wanted to, in my research, what I felt the most positive about it was, it spreads the responsibility among all citizens of the community, not just the property owners. So all citizens, if you rent, you will potentially help us with our schools. And it doesn't fall burdened just on the property owners of the city, because we have a lot of people that live here, but that don't own any property. So that is all I have.
Thanks, Sue.
Okay, can I say?
Go ahead, Rolly.
Well, you know, I can understand how some individuals, because there are those of us who have a vested interest in education from the mission statement perspective. So we were in this from the beginning, you know? We're, we're not necessarily new to this. We're true to this. So I can understand how a lot of residents would not understand surtaxes and property rich versus property poor. I had to go to a three-day training as a board member to, to understand it myself. You know, people don't understand an operational budget from where salaries come from versus where instructional, technology, those things. So, you know, that whole budget thing, that's, that's convoluted and complicated. Although I don't see us as bullies, but, you know, however. So I can understand, you know, some of the gentlemen not understand, I don't understand why they didn't, didn't stay to get answers unless they just didn't want to know the answers. However, for those of you who do care to be, to get responses to this, or to have more transparencies, transparency, we have town hall meetings where you will get an opportunity to ask more questions, get a better understanding. On Tuesday, January nineteenth at seven PM, we will be at the Waterloo Center for the Arts and the Peterson Town Hall. Now, all of this is already posted in the Courier. It's on our website. But again, for the listeners and viewers, we will be doing a town hall on Tuesday, January nineteenth at seven PM at the Waterloo Center for the Arts. Also, on Thursday, January twenty-first, we will be at Payne AME Church at six PM. And Saturday, January twenty-third at nine AM at Bunger Middle School. Again, those are three town hall meetings where the community can come and ask questions and get more information. And hopefully we can, you know, make this relevant and recent. Because, you know, we're sitting up here and we're talking about surtaxes and all this other stuff. And to be honest with you, until I came, became a board member, I wouldn't understand what you're saying. And, and as far as what other communities are doing, you know, that, again, doesn't necessarily impact or affect what's going on in Waterloo. So please come out to get your questions answered, and hopefully stay to get a response. Please and thank you.
That'd be great. Well, with anybody else?
Just a question for Michael. So I could understand how someone might have a question, based on this four percent, how many years would it take to pay for what we want to pay for, to pay back that forty-seven million dollars? How many years would it take, based on the way projections we have at this, at this point?
I don't know. I don't know if I totally understand your question.
Well, the bond is for twenty years. So in that twenty years, the four percent will be at that portion. We will need the, the four percent surtax for the full twenty years to, to pay for that portion of it. That's my question.
Depends on the growth of the four percent.
Okay.
The, just to give you a, a connection, the annual payments on a forty-seven million dollar bond are about three and a half million dollars a year. The four percent right now generates two-point-five. So it's a million dollars short of making the payment, and that's what we are committing save money to. But as that four percent grows, the thirty-three-point-five never grows. So the four percent will get closer to that, overtake it, and we won't even need the four percent to, to make the payment.
So potentially, down the road, we could actually reduce or get rid of this four percent if it no longer is necessary.
That's a possibility, and there are other options with that, but yes.
And the other thing I would add to, somebody in the public did ask me the question about the governor's proposal on the one cent money and the extension of the, of the sales tax, the one cent sales tax that people have been reading about. And the question specifically that I was asked was if in 2029, there is a commitment to, to sunset that, that deadline. And let, right now, the one cent money that people pay on sales taxes is there through 2029. If something happens and that's extended, so in the year 2030, the sales tax is still there. And in the year 2031, the sales tax is still there. If those dollars are being generated, would the board ever commit dollars at that time to repay the three-point-five million dollar annual payment? And, and actually, somebody even asked me if I would sign on the line, and I said, well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be forty-nine years old, and that's a long time from now, so I don't know that I can commit what a superintendent or a school board would do in the year, you know, 2032, or whatever. But I do think that there are, when you're saying, and there are other options, we don't know what's going to happen with that extension, but should that be passed, that would make a big difference for this, this upcoming board in the year 2029.
I think it's a testimonial to this board of saying, we have been reducing taxes. It is a priority. We are looking at all the options we can. Even this issue of how we're using our resources for this situation, the use of the income surtax, it's a tool. Well, that's what can be examined every year at budget time. And if that extension does happen, and the components are favorable to mix in with this, obviously that will be looked at.
Absolutely.
And the responsibility, the commitment of this board is to always look at, regardless of who is sitting here and how long in the future this is, they will always be looking out for the taxpayers.
And I, I'd just like to add, I appreciate all of our social responsibility. And while we are looking locally, we also need to look state and nationwide and ask our state legislature, legislators, why they cut the education budget and why it was vetoed. So in addition to holding us accountable, I think from a statewide budgeting perspective, as constituents, you need to contact your state representatives and ask why they cut the education budget, which helps all of our local, local education budgets. Thank you.
Just a couple comments here, you know, I remember reading one comment, and I said, we're trying to sneak in money for improvements at East and West, which has been very transparent, I felt like, before I was even on the board. But, you know, there are a couple of things there. One, we think about education and where you're a student, or even if you're working somewhere, creature comfort is an important thing. If you spend any time in the high schools, you know, on a hot day, I can see where a kid maybe doesn't learn as well, because, you know, maybe they're not as comfortable in the classroom. I don't know if we're talking about creature comfort here, because some of us are kind of cold tonight, but. But those are, you know, those are, I think, important things. I can say to myself, as my work, you know, I'm more, I work better when I'm comfortable, you know? And I think as adults, we're able to probably kind of overcome a lot of that, probably better than students are. So, you know, those are important things for these schools here, that I think renovations there to help further education in the classrooms there. And I think it's kind of being, we, it's not talked about as much, but, you know, like I said, spending some time in those buildings, you know, we can do some really good things there and help improve education in those facilities with this as well, and the overall education that we deliver to our students, so.
You mentioned the six million. As a part of the Facilities Committee, we discussed those numbers pretty heavily. And originally, the architects brought forward numbers that we did not accept. We were talking about potentially spending as much money on East and West as we were on, on this new facility. And we didn't feel that that was a, a good way to necessarily promote a new Career Technical Education Center. So we reduced that and, and worked with the architects to basically do the minimum to make East and West schools that could, could last the test of, of a few more years. They're already fifty and a hundred years old, respectively. So I think by spending generally a minimal amount of money, we can get several more years' use out of those two schools. And by so being in, in, in the future, if those schools have another use, they can continue to be used in the future. So we didn't want to spend more than we thought would be reasonable for the existing high schools, but yet, on the other hand, to promote this Career Technical Education Center and highlight that as, as the direction and focus moving forward.
That was another part of what I was going to say, was, you know, the other thing we're not, you know, taking consideration here is that, you know, may something out. But, you know, with the facilities improvements, we'll offer, you know, reduce overheads, you know, the heating and cooling, different things, you know, making those buildings more efficient from a physical plant standpoint, so those, those are good things.
Last decades, for sure. Decades, yeah.
But, and one thing I just wanted to clarify a little bit, when we were talking about, the property tax has been lower. The schools portion of the property tax has been lower. So just to make sure, we're not stating we're covering the county and the city. The schools portion has been lower, not the, we're not claiming there's been no property tax increase, so.
Great. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just going to save for thirty, thirty seconds. In terms of recency and relevancy, you know, I hear a lot of people talking about grandkids and, and kids, but, you know, I'm not a numbers person, but from a qualitative standpoint, constructing the CTE building will have such significant positive environmental impacts. So when our young people think with their hands and their minds, and also we know that being career-ready allows us to be college-ready if we so choose, but from an environmental standpoint, when you have a, a skill traitor, when you have hands-on learning, you get the opportunity to, to grow and improve, health and wellness-wise, we know that. Crime is decreased in your communities. So when we talk about recency and relevancy, let's look down the road. When we give our children an opportunity to, to learn however they choose to learn, then we're reducing crime. We're improving health and wellness, mental well, uh, mental health, physical health. And I just wanted to put that out there from a qualitative standpoint. And again, I don't do the numbers portion. That's what we have love for here on this school. No offense, Mike. Right, right. Exactly. And, and property values will, will go up, because when, when individuals are able to work, then they can buy houses and own property, which means you'll have a, a more of a property-rich city. So that's why I don't like to compare Waterloo to other school districts or districts, because we, we don't know, you know, how, you know, what their property situation i- is like. So I don't like to, to compare that. But again, so down the road, we're giving up, young people the opportunity to become homeowners so that we can have more of a property-rich city, which means that they can contribute a lot, lot more. And so we don't have to worry so much about taking money from our income taxes and, and all of that. So again, I just wanted to say from a qualitative, not so much a quantitative standpoint, to not think so much of recency, but look at the relevancy of what this, how, how this can impact us down the road environmentally. Does that make sense?
Piggyback on that a little bit, and, and I'd like to supplement the business case I attempted to make earlier, where it's most, more efficient to learn more in the K-12 years, and supplement a little less with higher education to achieve the same overall skill level. But the intangible here is, hopefully those students will go beyond the current skill level.
Right.
And therefore, again, to supplement what you're saying, generally speaking, the higher the skill level, higher education, the more they contribute to the tax base, either in terms of additional revenue or in terms of using fewer tax-based resources. So that's kind of the intangible. So when, to me, from a business standpoint, if the business case is solid in terms of, of economics, and then the intangibles fall favorably, then that's a fairly strong overall case.
All right. Well, the recommended motion then is that the Board of Education approve the resolution on the funding structure for the high school reform project. Can I get that motion on the table, please? Thanks, Rhonda. And a second? Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the recommendation, please signify. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Bless you. And that concludes the action items on our agenda this evening, and so we can move on, then, to our superintendent's report.
You bet. Well, number one, our high school reform proposal, and we are very, 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 very busy. I don't know how many varies that was, but it's a lot. Very busy sharing this message out and about. Crystal and I have had, taken every single opportunity, we, we told people we would even come to their bridge club. I mean, it doesn't matter, whatever it is, we would come. We, we are very much enjoying having that opportunity. We're doing a meeting with businesses to talk about securing commitments for partnerships and internships, and, and equipment, and long-lasting relationships. And so, I think that's really great, although they're not necessarily, you know, building the building, but that, that commitment long-term is really what leads to sustainability, and it's so important. And we are hearing, we're getting great, great commitments from, from businesses to do that. I would also like to put in a plug for the, the town hall meetings that are coming up on January nineteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-third. And Rhonda shared where they, they are. It's a Tuesday night, a Thursday night, and a Saturday morning. We tried to be flexible and give people opportunity, or options to attend, so we certainly, people, hope people will come. I will be there, but as will many members of the committee. And so, just, we want to make sure that your, your questions get answered. I, I also was, was disappointed that the gentleman who had questions, I did step out into the hallway and ask them if they wanted some answers to their questions, and they, they indicated not. But I, but I, you know, I, I do think I will reach out and try again to make sure that they, they mentioned using staff that we already have. Well, that, that's a misnomer on their part, because actually, we are already using, we will be using staff that we already have. So, when they said, I wish you would use staff that you already have, the answer is yes, we agree. Mimicking what we have at Hawkeye Community College, it is not the same thing, and I will certainly make sure that I, I have that opportunity to share that Hawkeye Community College is very supportive and is writing, has written a letter of endorsement, as has the University of Northern Iowa. It will bolster their enrollment, it will increase their retention of students over time, instead of coming for one or two semesters, instead of staying, you know, to finish their degree. It is a, it is a statistic that I do, because I am a numbers person, I love that. But, one of the statistics that we will share, we share at, at meetings often is, what is the graduation, when, when students walk into a four-year university, what percentage of them, you know, stay and complete their degree? And I, I sometimes will ask the crowd to think about that. What percentage of people that walk into a four-year college complete their degree? And it really is quite low. It's, you know, under forty percent of people nationally that actually finish their degree. So, you have sixty-some percent who don't finish, so they don't have a degree, they do have debt now, and then very often, they come back and they, they, they get the education and they, they decide to try something else, and then they kind of duplicate services. So, anyway, you know, answering questions with that. And on the other piece, I, this is just kind of a positive thing, as a part of our sharing the message, we have had really amazing opportunities to go to groups that exist within Waterloo and, and Evansdale and, and the community Rotary Exchange Club service-oriented, oriented groups. I, I actually judged a chili cook-off for the Fraternal Order of the Eagles, and had thirty-five soups, and, and spent all of Saturday, Saturday afternoon tasting soup, and it was an absolutely amazing opportunity, and it was a delightful afternoon. It was my son's birthday, and so I happened to take him along as a co-judge as part of his birthday gift, and he very much enjoyed eating thirty-five soups. And so, you know, it just, it helped me realize, just solidified the, the commitment of this community to, to not only the students, but the people who live here. So, just an amazing thing. Last thing, reminder, no school on Monday, January eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
Nineteenth, okay. I want to make sure I get that right. Monday is Martin Luther King Day, and with the president's committee approval, I would like to just read one paragraph in closing. We have Martin Luther King Day on Monday, and we have a teacher workday on Tuesday. But just in celebration of Martin Luther King Junior Day, I just think this is just, would be remiss if I didn't read this. "The Martin Luther King Junior Holiday celebrates the life and legacy of a man who brought hope and healing to America. We commemorate as well the timeless values he taught us through his example, the values of courage, truth, justice, compassion, dignity, humility, and service that so radiantly defined Dr. King's character and empowered his leadership. On this day, Martin Luther King Day, we commemorate the universal, unconditional love, forgiveness, and nonviolence that empowered his revolutionary spirit. We commemorate Dr. King's inspiring words, because his voice and his vision filled our, a great void in this nation, and answered our collective longing to become a country that truly lived by its noblest principles. Yet, Dr. King knew that it wasn't enough to just talk the talk. He knew that he needed to walk the walk for his words to be credible, and so he did. And so, we commemorate on this holiday the man of action, who put his life on the line for freedom and justice every day, the man who braved threats and jail and beatings, and who ultimately paid the highest price to make democracy a reality for Americans." So, when we take that day off, I think it's critical that every single person remembers the significance of that man.
Here, here. Thank you, Jane. All right. With that, we can move on, then, to information from board members. It's kind of a hard act to follow, geez. I'm gonna start over there with Lyle on the end.
My only comment, I'll be on my soapbox for just a couple of sentences here, as I am every year.
I like you so much.
It's really Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. Reverend is who he was first and foremost, his philosophy. He quoted St. Thomas Aquinas, St. Augustine in his letters from, Letter from a Birmingham Dale, as the justification for why he was where he was. So, to me, it's kind of sad that the Reverend title has been lost, because that's who he really was.
Here, here. Mike?
Just a shout-out to the participation and the nice time I think everyone had at the East-West basketball game last week at East High. I think it went real well. I attended, I saw several people there, I recognized, and a nice halftime show, I have to say. My daughter was involved in that.
[laughing].
So, I commend all the students and staff and players. It was a well-fought game, and they will have a rematch here in a few weeks, I see on the, on the agenda, schedule.
Good one, Nick.
Secondly, I attended a wellness and physical education nutrition meeting, kind of a committee I'm involved with today, and we're continuing to work on that, and would be bringing some information to the board concerning nutrition, education, and wellness, and the physical education piece in the future. So, there's some good work going on amongst the district in that area as well. And I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Rhonda? Okay. Sue?
I just wanted to remind our students that this Friday is the end of the second term. So, we have tests going on this week, and so, get lots of rest and sleep, and study hard and do your best, and you can start afresh next week in your third term. Then I also wanted to, also, this young man here, I really would like to see a program in that. My son has started to take some P.E. classes at West, and he would really embrace a class like that. So, I would really like to see that become a reality here in the district, and I thank you for taking your time, for coming this evening and sharing with us, and I look forward to, if there is a basketball game, Dr. Lindeman's gonna play for the staff, so. Partied committed her.
Wow. I, I milked a cow. So, I will, I will, absolutely, I will play basketball in front of the public.
That's all. Thank you. Angie?
I just, with Dr. Lindeman's sentiments or her comments around Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King.
Thank you.
I just want to challenge people who have the opportunity to have the day off, to not have it be a day off, but a day of service, a day of giving back, a day of making sure that his life is not in vain, that you do a random act of kindness if you can't do a day of service, something like that. There will be tons of activities at Whibley College that will take place from Monday through that Friday, they do a whole week of service. So, if you need to find something to do, there'll be some things there as well. I'm sure there's some things locally as well.
Jessie?
Well, I'll put a plug in for, February's coming up, Engineering Week will be here for all those STEM-minded people out there. And with that, there'll be opportunities for schools of Waterloo to have engineers from John Deere visit their facility and talk to their classes. I think I am scheduled for two groups, two teachers, about six or twelve classes at Hoover already, so, we'll need a few more to step up. But great opportunity to, you know, bring somebody in to talk to the students. I see, I saw some elementaries onboard already, which is nice. I think Becker was on, and Orange was on, and also, I saw some of the classes at West and Central, so.
Excellent.
Oh, one more thing, shout-out to West High Wrestling Team, they won their first, first match this year and part of last year, they have not won a match, so they won...
They won two last year.
Their duel? Excellent.
Yep.
Great. Well, anything further? If not, we will be back here in the boardroom on January twenty-fifth at six P.M. Tune in, you never know what might get said. I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second.
Meeting adjourned. Yay.
All in favor? They're all in favor. I don't even, I think that feels like way too...